All right, good evening. The time being 7:01 on September 25th, all members of the planning board being present, call this meeting to order. I'll let those in the audience know that we've had some additional requests for continuation since the official agenda had come out earlier. Those are Agenda Item F, 1600 Shawshin Street, Agenda Item G, which is the other 1600 Shawshin Street, Agenda Item H, 1438 Main Street, and Agenda Item I, 1879 Main Street. That one was already on there, but those will not be heard this evening. So if anybody's here for any of those, you are free to go. You will not miss anything. They will be moved to our next agenda in October. All right, with that, we'll start with, yes?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, just one more note. There originally had been a discussion planned for the landscape plan acceptance for 937 North Street, which has since been struck from the agenda as well. And it was not a public hearing, so it wasn't continued, so it was removed.
Okay. All right, so moving on, we have Agenda Item A, approval of minutes from August 21st, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 21st, 2023.
Second. A motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Agenda Item B1, committee reports, any committee reports by any of the members at this time. Seeing none, move to Agenda Item B2, Town Planning's report. Ms. Lauter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item up, I wanted to note that the following public hearings are scheduled for our next meeting on Monday, October 16th, in addition to any continued hearings from this evening, which, as you noted, are quite a few. 295 Main Street signs special permit for replacement signs at Citizens Bank, 1053 East Street for a use special permit for an electrical wholesale distributor, 913 East Street for site plan review and special permit for a self-storage facility, and then 1167, 1177, 1187 Main Street, the McClellan Oil Site, Site Plan Review Special Permit for a multifamily housing development. So those are all going to be heard initially at our October 16th meeting. Next item I want to note is the progression of the MBTA Communities zoning district exercise that we're going through right now. The second public feedback session was held on Wednesday, September 13th, at the library. There were 26 registrants and approximately 10 walk-in attendees. This public feedback session was a workshop format where participants contributed by writing down specific advantages and disadvantages for each of the proposed six sites, and this feedback was used to narrow down the six sites down to three for further consideration. A second in-person feedback session, third in the series, is scheduled for Thursday, October 12th, at 5:30 at the Tewksbury Senior Center, to consider the three potential districts which emerged from the previous sessions as the most advantageous, those sites being the Main A District, which includes Heathbrook Plaza to Oakdale Plaza, Main B, which is the St. Williams Church area to Colonial Drive, and North B, which is the Trelbrook Golf Course. To inform this discussion, feedback has been solicited from the Public Safety and Public Works Departments to provide context related to emergency response and resources, as well as the infrastructure capabilities and potential challenges for those three areas. These district features, such as density, building height, and open space requirements, will be discussed at this meeting. The intention for this workshop is to finalize two viable district options for consideration at town meeting, and anyone interested in learning more or registering for this event are welcome to reach out to me or contact the Community Development Office. Next item was brought up as a result of some of the public hearings at our last meeting held on September 11th. There appears to be some interest from board members in having applicants for signed special permits requesting relief from dimensional requirements to provide a compliant sign design to compare against the proposed. And this is something that I'm proposing to you folks that I can add to the signed special permit application form, just to get applicants ahead of it so that we can make informed decisions. And I propose adding, quote, "For signed special permit applications where relief is requested from dimensional requirements or otherwise seeking to exceed allowable size limits, applicants are required to provide a compliant design for comparison." And I'll just get rid of, get through these last two things, and we can have questions if you do. Next, special town meeting Tuesday, October 3rd. Registered voters in the room, I encourage you to attend because it's super fun. And that's held at the Tewksbury Memorial High School Gym. And last item, at the last meeting, board members had requested I look into two site issues. 85 Main Street Burger King having some issues with their landscaping. I have reached out to the previously known contact the last time this was a problem, three years ago, and they are no longer with the company, so I am working on getting another contact for the site from the property owner. And for 1325 Main Street, the former Discount Madness, I have reached out to the contacts, the, excuse me, the owner's attorney, and they are to reply with a plan for maintaining the property and addressing some of the board members' concerns. And I am happy to take any questions on any of those items from you folks.
Any questions?
All set.
Thank you, Alex.
Do we want to do the sign language?
Sure.
Okay.
Everybody else, yes?
Yes, please.
Okay, so make a motion to adopt that into the application?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. I think that's it for this, other than the fact that, I'll note that, you know, you mentioned town meeting. As of right now, our audience may or may not outnumber those who show up to town meeting in the audience.
Our chairman loves town meeting.
I hate town meetings.
And just before we get to Agenda Item B3, I do want to preface this, and I did make a note in you folks' meeting materials, that the Terramore Drive street acceptance was discussed at the previous meeting, and their attendance this evening is due to an error on my part, not theirs, so their proximity to town meeting is my fault and not theirs.
I don't even see something about those markets in the...
So you, you folks didn't officially vote on the waiver, because I understood that to be part of the as-built and not the street acceptance, so that was my error, and that's why they're here.
It was in there, though, because I do remember seeing something.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so then we will move on to Agenda to B3, Terramore Drive waiver request.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants.
Let me just try to see if I can do this quick.
Yeah.
Does anybody here not recall this and have any issue with it, rather than making them go through a major presentation?
I thought it was a done deal already, and I'm...
So, again, this is administrative action, and it's not open to public comment anyways. I'd just as soon take a motion to grant the waiver as requested.
So moved.
The motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Didn't have time to warm up the chair.
Sorry about that.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item C, this is 30 North Gate Road, Family Suite Special Permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Do we have somebody here for 30 North Gate Road? Once you get settled, if you're just giving names for the record, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Chris Osiliopoulos, 2 Water Street, Medford, Mass.
And Lauren Sardella, 30 North Gate Road, Tewksbury.
So we are the construction company. We are called Develop X Properties, and we're doing the work for Lauren and her family. At this point, our building permit checklist has all been approved pending this meeting. So we're excited to work with them, and just wanted to give Lauren an opportunity to introduce herself, her family, and, you know, the importance of this project to her and her family.
Good evening. As I stated, Lauren Sardella, resident here in Tewksbury. We're looking to do a family suite on our existing home now. Here tonight, we have my parents, Dan and Roberta Sardella, and they would be the occupants of the family suite. Looking to do it, you know, so we can help out with some of my mom's medical conditions, give my dad some assistance, and so that he, knock on wood, will hopefully be able to retire once it's complete and be home with us, and their two grandchildren. I just returned to work today after my second maternity leave, and having their help in the home will certainly be beneficial as well. So bringing the family all back together.
All right. With that, we'll start with Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm all for the process of the family suite. I think it's a, it's a great thing we have in town, and it's very nice of you to do that for your parents, and we've had a number of those in the past, so I just have a couple of questions. I've been to the house, beautiful neighborhood, beautiful home. Do you have sewer present at the house?
No, we're currently on septic, so we would be tying into the sewer system.
Okay. So, Chris, I guess you designed all the plans for this?
I didn't personally, they, they used Outside Architect.
Okay.
But all of the, the site plans have been completed. We're, you know, tying in sewer to the street.
Okay.
Yep.
And the total square feet on this particular family suite is?
I know, I'd want to say it's maybe 800.
Yeah, it's less than 1,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just hoping for the number, for the record, that's all. So no, I did see the plans. And did it show two front doors?
It showed, yes. Well, it's not really two front doors.
Yeah, so it would be our, our existing front door, because as you know, it's a split-level home, and then the door that would be added would be for the common entrance, so that the in-law is connected to the main portion of the house.
Okay.
We didn't have a way to do that otherwise.
No way of putting it on the side somewhere for...
No, because that's essentially like, it, it's a typical design, too, where you've seen them within the neighborhood, too, where you have that second door that goes into the, essentially the garage door that's on the right, if you're looking at it. So the way that the design was done, and again, I wasn't part of that initial architectural planning of this, but it was to replicate similar homes where you had that, that garage door, we would say.
Okay. I don't think we have that allowance as far as, I believe you can't have two front doors or two, you know...
That is correct. You can't have two front doors if that were a separate dedicated entrance to the family suite, however, as Ms. Sardella noted, it opens into a mudroom, which then has entry into the garage, the family suite, and the main house, so, because it's not a dedicated separate, if that wall didn't exist between the, the door between the family, the single-family home and the mudroom, then it wouldn't be allowed, but since it's all connected, it's fine.
Right, okay. I didn't look into, I didn't look into the plans that deeply, but I knew, I did go by the house and see the, see the outside plans.
I can show, you know, if you want to look at it.
No, I did see, I did see the, the design, but by asking you, by asking you the common area and entrance, and that's fine.
Correct, absolutely, yes.
And I hate to bring it up, because I'm not, I'm not in, not, not in favor of not voting for this, because I am, but I just wanted you to get that clarified. So with that, I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just, I was just looking, you don't have a laundry down there for that?
For the, for the new area?
For the family suite? Do I not see one down there?
It's part of the, within the mechanical room of the...
Oh, yeah, I think...
Where the garage, where kind of where the existing garage is, where we're going...
Yeah, it was just going to be like a stackable.
Just doesn't really show it, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I can, you know, I can take a closer look, but no, no.
Not requirement, anyway, I'm just curious, you know?
They're going to make me do their laundry now.
Probably. No, well, listen, I don't have any, I don't have any problem, so that it looks like a pretty good layout there, and I'm glad you're able to, you know, I'm glad you're able to do that for mom and dad. Yeah.
Mr. Lozardi?
I have no further questions, just seems like a good application for a family suite.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
No issues with the design. I had picked up on the same issue with the front door, but having had it explained, I think it's just wonderful what you're doing, and I do love to see families staying together long-term. So I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Chair is satisfied as well. So with that, we'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, we close the public hearing.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the family suite special permit?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the site plan special permit for the in-law suite at 30 North Gate.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Moving on to Agenda Item D, 836-846 Main Street, Site Plan Review. Motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. If you state your name for the record, the floor is yours.
Michael Colombo, manager for Battello LLC.
If you could just pull that a little, here you go.
Oh, sure, thank you, sorry. So we'd like to make improvements in the driveway. We demoed the 846 Main Street, and so that would provide us with additional parking, and so I'm here for your blessings.
We'll start with Mr. Chip.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I went through, I believe I had one of these plans I had some notes on. So I noticed in the IDR letter, there was some concern about the driveways not being 200 feet apart. And so generally, in looking at it, I mean, it, it seems like if we try to push that, we may run into some problems with dead-end parking. The site seems to have some nice flow as far as the fire truck being able to pass through. I know they hate backing up a fire truck, so generally speaking, I think, you know, it's a tough site. It looks like you're making the best of it, so I have no real issues with what you have.
Thank you.
Mr. Lozardi?
Do you have any snow removal plan on this?
I do not, but I'm happy to provide one. I do have an engineer that I work with, and there were some changes done at the last minute to accommodate the fire trucks, you know, entry and exit through the property, so this is a different plan than we had before, and we lost some sort of green space, if you would. But I'm happy to have the engineer submit one ASAP and submit it.
Yeah, I think just, because I'm looking at this plan, and I'm just not seeing anywhere that, you know, snow would go here, and there's not really a whole lot of places to actually plow it. And then on your diagram, you have a dumpster in the back. Is there a fence around that? Is that what the Xs there are?
The intention is to put a fence around it, yes.
Okay. All right. I think that's all I have for now.
All right. Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I really have no, I really have no comments at this time, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are we all set as far as with engineering? Have other comments been addressed with engineering?
No, we just got this on Friday, I believe, right?
Okay. Because there's a lot of outstanding comments that have to be resolved.
Right.
Okay. So one other question I'll ask you while you're here is, what is your plan for the sidewalk on Old Boston Road?
Well, we're going to be doing all-new paving, you know, to the edge of my property. I mean, I can extend the paving to include the area of the...
I believe you're required to put sidewalks on Old Boston.
If I'm required, then I will comply, obviously.
Okay, I mean...
I mean, it's an expensive property.
Just because, you know, we used to be able to, but you're going to have to put the sidewalks in, you know, on the front, on the back, unless you get away from DPW.
Okay.
We're not the, we're not the body for that anymore. So, I mean, you can, you can look into that.
I appreciate that.
But you have to do it with them, just so you know.
Sure. Yeah, like I said, we just got this on Friday, and, you know, we scrambled, tried to get some answers, you know, between Friday and today.
Okay.
But I'm here to find out the feelings, and I will follow up.
Okay. And there's a lot of outstanding stuff, so we wouldn't be approving this tonight, because you don't have, you don't have everything resolved.
Yeah, the, the front driveway or the curb was just installed by, I guess that's a state road, right?
Yeah.
So that's all brand-new, like later in the past few weeks, and so, but again, I'm happy to comply. I mean, I want, it's my property, I own the property, so I want it to be done right, and it's going to be for a long time.
So I don't want to put you on the spot, but how soon do you think you'll be open?
Oh, my God, it can't be soon enough. I'm about eight months behind schedule and double the cost.
Yeah, well, I know that, but unfortunately, I've been waiting for it to open, because I'm looking forward to it, so, but...
Thank you.
But good luck. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate it. So we'll just follow up with the DPW, correct?
You can do that if I can have my turn first. So, a couple of things. So obviously, it was already brought up, you know, you've got, you've got a lot of exits and entrances here, which is not, you know, DPW's preference.
Right.
This, we just sort of did this at the other corner, where, you know, Main Street and Old Boston meet. I'm not necessarily, you know, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but there probably needs to be a few things. And one of them, I would say, is since you're listing these as employee parking only, some sort of restriction signage at the entrance would obviously make for, you know, one, your employees are going to come in, they're going to be there for, for a while.
Sure.
So it's not going to be a, a major in and out...
Correct.
...the way, you know, you hope the rest of the parking lot is. So that might alleviate some of the concerns of having that entrance. So if it's meant to be employee parking only, signage, and we can figure out what exactly that should say and how, but, you know, that limits that to employee parking only, you know, you know, no, no customer parking, whatever, you know, whatever we figure out makes sense to make that as limited, you know, in use, and then you're not going to get the ins and outs.
Correct.
That obviously will be most important when you get to those, you know, times of year when you're just busier, but they make sure they don't go in there.
Yes.
One of the other things we did on the other one was, you know, having the front, front entrances as enter-only and using the back to go out. I don't know that that necessarily works for you the way it worked for the Monument business, because they're, they're not going to get the kind of in and out that you're, you should be expected to get, so I don't, I'm not...
Yeah.
That's not going to fix the, you know, the extra driveways...
Right.
...issue. You know, some people may just choose to do that, because it might just be easier to come out, you know, in Old Boston, go down the other end to come back out and meet Main Street than try to get out right here. You know, the only one I would say might be, the one that's coming closest to the point of where it meets Old Boston, and maybe, maybe we make that, has to be entrance only, and nobody's coming out that. You know, where you, where you're showing the truck coming in for your, yeah, then maybe we make that entrance only. Because I feel like if you're coming out of that one, you're, you're going to be trying to get out not very far from the person who's coming off of Old Boston Road, which is already difficult for anybody trying to do that, but now you're adding, you know, a car here trying to do the same thing in a pretty tight space. So, I mean, it's, it's a suggestion, and you've already got it sort of curved there...
Right.
...which really should only be people coming north and going in as it is. Most people are going to use that other entrance.
Sure.
I think it might make more sense, make it entrance only, and alleviate any possibility of people coming out that way, and, you know, it'll help a little bit at that corner.
Yeah, it's a reasonable suggestion, and certainly happy to consider that, you know, with signage and all, you know?
And as far as some of the other, and with some of these, I know they're listed, and Ms. Lauter pointed them out, you know, that we, we can offer, you know, relief on some of these. One of the things I would say is that, you know, is reminding us of the fact that this site used to be one-piece, and people were trying to get in and out of here. He now has the property next door added into it. So, I mean, if anything, it feels like it's been expanded and made better, even if it's not, you know, exactly compliant. So to me, you know, if you were just taking the site as is, I mean, people have seen what that's like trying to get in and out, especially, you know, in busier times, that is much worse than what's proposed here. So that's one of the reasons why I'd be more inclined to be okay with some of the, some of the asks, to make this work.
And be reminded that I inherited the driveways and the curb cuts, you know, when I bought it, you know, and there was two different properties, and I, as you just said, I combined them.
Yeah. All right. So, and as Mr. Vitale pointed out, there's still quite a bit of engineering, you know, to be dealt with. So, I mean, I think those are, you know, I think those are good enough for us for now. With that, I'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
I just have one more comment, I'm sorry, Mr. Vitale. The, I thought my, my fellow member, Mr. Duffy, was going to pick this out. The waiver on the bicycle racks, we're very big on having bicycle racks at our businesses along Route 38. Do you have any issue with that?
Not at all, and as a matter of fact, I appreciate the, the suggestion, and it will be, it will be done, because I'm doing another development in Billerica, same thing, I'm putting in like, that's a much bigger development, happy to do that, absolutely.
Okay.
And I have it in my other property now.
So just so, again, because some of these, one of the other letters you would have gotten was from Ms. Lauter's, that there are some things that aren't on the plans that now need to be added, so don't miss those either while you're dealing with the engineering stuff. One would be, obviously, where is the bike rack going? Like, that's just an example, but those need to find their way on there, too, before we're finished up.
Absolutely.
So, all right. So we had a boat, we were about to take a motion to continue, I guess we're 7:40? 7:40?
So I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to continue the application for 836-846 Main Street.
All right, we have a motion to continue to 7:40 on 1016. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. See you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to Agenda Item E, 913 East Street, and the 911, 913 East Street, Site Plan Review.
That's the October agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I grabbed the wrong one. Did I scoop it? They did. Scooped all of it.
Zoning bylaw.
Sorry about that. So now we're on to the zoning bylaw amendments. Do you, is there, are you, okay?
Just need a motion to waive the public reading, if you so wish.
A motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Excellent. All right. So there are two articles on the warrant for town meeting related to zoning matters. In a nutshell, following the public hearings held for retail marijuana, there was some further review of the interstate overlay district as it was currently drawn on the maps, because that is one of the districts that allows for retail marijuana by right with the site plan review provision. And there was some question as to why it didn't, it didn't exist at the Route 133-495 interchange, and likewise, didn't extend all the way down Wilburn Street. Prior, when this district was implemented, it, basically, they put a pin in and did a radius, and it ended up cutting through portions of Wilburn Street and didn't capture the interchange at Route 133. And the Select Board asked the Community Development Department, myself, and Assistant Town Manager Steve Sadwick, to look at the maps and see where the interstate overlay district made sense to expand, and the result was the addition of bringing the interstate overlay district on Wilburn, at Wilburn Street, to the Billerica line, rather than traversing through one of the parcels on Wilburn Street, and likewise, adding it to the Route 495-Route 133 interchange. And there was also an amendment associated, because in the first article, which modifies And there was also an amendment associated, because in the first article, which modifies the scope of authority of the interstate overlay district, one of the underlying districts was inadvertently missed in the text, but it was captured on the map. So there's going to be an amendment presented by the town manager at town meeting to make sure that that's captured. And I'm happy to answer any questions. But, sorry, the second article being just the actual map that accompanies the text.
Yep. Okay. All right, so who's actually bringing this forward?
Town manager of Select Board.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we'll start with the Article 23. We'll start with Mr. Lozardi.
I don't have any additional comments on it. Seems like it makes sense.
Mr. Chapman?
So, just for our four or five viewers at home, and anybody that reads the minutes, when we were at the MBDA communities, some people came up to me and asked why we were creating another district in the town. So after having read through all of it and researched, it basically just looks like we're making a logical boundary for this overlay district, so that it doesn't partially cover some parcels and not others and whatnot. So we're just basically making it work to meet the real intent of what the district was created for in the first place. But we're not creating a second district or overlaying another district on top of an overlay.
Right.
Okay, well, we have that on the record, so.
Mr. Duffy?
I'm all set with Article 23. Mr. Chairman?
I am as well, Mr. Chairman.
The Chair has no issue with Article 23, and again, I think as Mr. Champ pointed out, we're not really doing something new, we're just clarifying something and something already exists. So hopefully that's clear to everybody when they have this at town meeting. With that, we'll look at Article 20, yeah, then I'll make it so the audience can look at, talk about both if they want, because it's easier. So we'll do Article 24, that's just the map corrections. Anybody have any issues?
No.
No issues?
No.
So with that, I'll open up to the audience. Were there any questions, comments, and concerns on either Article 23 or Article 24? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. We'll do these individually. Do we have a recommendation for Article 23?
This motion to adopt?
This is a motion to adopt, motion to indefinitely postpone, no recommendation, and do we have a fourth one?
Recommend disapproval, I guess.
Yeah, so those are really, those are our choices.
I can make a motion to adopt.
All right.
I check on that.
All right, we have a motion to recommend adoption of Article 23. We have that seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to Article 24, do we have a?
I can make a motion to adopt Article 24.
All right. Motion made in second, all is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, that takes care of those. See, it's one of the nice things about having just done the bylaw, you know, our agenda for changes to the bylaw, much shorter than usual.
Well, don't hold your breath for May.
That moves us on to Agenda Item F, which the applicant has requested to be continued, and we have that penciled in. This is Shawshin, 1600 Shawshin Street 1, and we have that penciled in for 7:30 on the 16th. So do I have a motion to continue till then?
So moved.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to Agenda Item G, which is 1600 Shawshin Street 2, and we have that penciled in for 7:35. So can I have a motion to continue till then?
So moved.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
That brings us on to Agenda Item H, 1438 Main Street, was also requested to be continued to our 10/16 meeting. We have that penciled in at 7:25, so can I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item I, 1879 Main Street, who has also requested to be moved to our next meeting.
Have some discussion on that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Patali.
So, I don't have all the information here, but maybe Alex, you do. How long have they been continuing 1879 Main Street for? It seems like they've been going on and on and on. I know they get issues with conservation and so forth, so I'm looking to maybe have them withdraw the article, I mean, withdraw the application and reapply once they're all set.
Sure, so their initial application was made in June, and they are still working through significant issues with both the stormwater and the flood, compensatory flood storage with the Conservation Commission. Those are the two primary issues that really have the potential to alter the design for the whole project.
This will be, this probably will be their fourth continuous, because it would have been one in July, one in August.
Yeah.
Now two in July, correct?
Yeah, definitely four, if not five.
So June, June, June two?
I'm sorry?
June as well? Were they here in June?
They came in June for one meeting, and then I couldn't remember if it was the first or the second meeting, though.
I'm making a suggestion that we contact them and let them know that, you know, we're not going to continue this a fifth time without them coming in to explain to us why we should or where they are or what their.
Yeah, just.
Just have it sit in limbo and continuing constantly screws with the agenda.
Absolutely.
And, you know, if they don't have some explanation as to, you know, where they're going and what their plan is, then, you know, we're probably going to look to have this taken off.
You got it.
Because I know they have issues with their, with the number of parking spaces that they want to propose and what they can, I guess, correct, right? And that's the last time I've heard of it.
Right, so the issue is to accommodate the necessary compensatory flood storage and stormwater management system. At this time, the current design for the number of parking spaces, the threshold that the pavement reaches doesn't seem to accommodate both of those concerns.
Because you can't put two into one, right? Is that what it was? Okay, all right, just a note, Mr. Chairman, I know they've continued, continued, and continued.
Yep.
So we need to get some clarity just for our sake and the agenda as well.
So we have a motion to continue 1879 to 7:20 on the 16th with the condition that we will contact the petitioner to let them know that they either come in on our next meeting to give us some update, or we're going to look to remove this and, I guess for us, what are we doing at that point?
If there wasn't a mutual agreement to withdraw, withdraw without prejudice, then the board would be, the way to remove it from the agenda would be to continue it to December or to deny it.
Okay.
To a future meeting that wasn't the next one, basically.
So if we don't have somebody here to explain to us why we shouldn't just deny the, deny the request at the next meeting, that's probably what we're going to end up doing.
Okay.
You know, they got to give us some sort of an update and think at this point, I don't want it in writing. Someone comes in, explains to us where we're going, then that would be fine, you know, they don't have to have an answer, but they have to have an explanation, something, some update for us, all right?
Yep.
All right, that takes care of that.
Actually, we don't have the motion to actually.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was the motion, I'm sorry. So do I have a second?
Second.
A motion made, say all is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to Agenda Item J, which is 592 Main Street, Site Plan Review, Special Permit, that was also continued for my 9/11 meeting.
Hello?
How you doing?
Mark Shea.
Kevin Shea.
So we're here tonight, last meeting, we, all we had to do was clean up the engineering issue, and the engineering department didn't get back to us until Friday, and they asked us to do a second test pit where the drainage system is going to go, which is scheduled for Wednesday. And I think what I'm here to do tonight is ask for an approval with the contingency that we obviously work with the DPW just to finish up that last small hiccup. I met with Alex earlier this morning, we kind of went through everything. I believe on her end, she was good, and that was the only thing being held up. And the reason for this is because, a few reasons. Number one is, as we've stated, we're just a small family-owned business, we're trying to get this done, we don't own the property yet, and every month that we continue to go out, we lose a significant amount of money on our end. We've made a lot of agreements here with the board to see, to get this going on this tough piece of property parcel. So this is the only thing that's holding up, and we'd just love to be able to work with the DPW, but at the same time, get approval so I can close on the property and finally own it outright. I think I stated that right. Is that correct, Alex? No?
I think you're good.
Okay. I have no idea, so.
We'll start with Mr. Patali.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know it's a long process, and I feel for you guys as far as having to go week to week to week, and it's cha-ching, cha-ching all the time, you know, and it's unfortunate, and I will help as much as I possibly can on my end. So just a couple of questions. I was by the site the other day, so all the trees are coming down on Main Street, correct?
Yeah.
So cleaning it all up.
We're going to pretty much level the entire lot.
Okay.
Get rid of everything, start fresh. It's just a mess, so.
Do we resolve the sidewalks in the rear?
Yep. We know with the DPW, they kind of told us that they weren't going to budge, so we said okay, and on the latest submit, we put the sidewalks in the rear.
That's a shame, because I was, like I said, by the site, I know the site very well. There was nothing between Main Street all the way up to Rockland and Court Street, there's nothing, there's no one living there, and I don't think anybody's going to be using that sidewalk.
I fully agree.
And if anything, it's just going to, you know, be there for nobody to use and an expense to you guys, and I feel for you guys as well. But, so I was hoping that we could do something on that end, but again, it's DPW's ultimate call, and then unfortunately, they, so what did they say? They said they wanted them?
That's it, they didn't really give us an explanation. They just said that that's what they asked for, and that's what they wanted.
Okay, and that was Mr.?
Would you speak with?
Andrew.
Andrew.
Andrew Stack?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set, I'd like to get this moving forward as well, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, it seems like you're moving in the right direction with a lot of this. I know that the DPW still has an exception to the distance between the driveways, which is only about 75 feet on the old street there, but we've talked about it, it makes sense. So, you know, we try to, you know, we try to stick together as a town, but also, it's a tough site.
Yeah.
And what you're doing is going to make, you know, a massive improvement to it, so if there has to be a little bit of give back, I'm okay with that, to sort of piggyback on Mr. Patali's comment. I mean, did they not have, did they offer you like the fee in lieu of or anything?
No, but from what we've been told, it's usually a lot higher than what it would cost us to put in the sidewalk, so it's, I'd rather do the sidewalk than give more money out for nothing.
Okay, understood. All right, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lozardi?
I appreciate you all adding sidewalks. I think, you know, again, it's a nice addition for the town. Other than that, I have no other questions or comments.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just looking in the packet at the checklist for the inspection of porous pavements, like, who actually performs that inspection?
You know, I could not tell you who. There's something else, do you have any insight into?
I do not. I expect that would be the private property owner to maintain it.
And then we'd get a copy of the.
Oh, the, okay.
Is that how that goes? Okay. Well, I do think it's, as Mr. Champ mentioned, we, you know, we do, you know, tend to, you know, defer to DPW recommendations and, you know, 99%, but it shouldn't have been 100 in this instance, it's, I disagree with that, with their decision on that, and I just would like to say that for the record. I have zero problem with the loading dock driveway, so in that being said, I also would be willing to move this forward tonight.
Okay, all right, so Ms. Lauter, if I'm looking at your update here, so am I right in saying 5, 7, 15?
Let me just read along here, hang on one second. I wrote this last week, I don't remember.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can ask another question to them while we're waiting for clarification? Did they explain to you what type of sidewalk they wanted on the Roger, on the Old Boston roadside?
They did not say.
So Main Street has to be concrete?
Has to be concrete, so we assumed we were here for another meeting where other streets that are putting in sidewalks was just regular pavement, so we assumed that that would be fine.
Well, the difference in cost is going to be a factor with bituminous concrete versus regular cement concrete, so.
Yes.
I mean, again, my opinion is, the fact that it's never going to be used, I'd rather see it put in bituminous concrete rather than, because it's going to hold up as well, but, you know.
I'm for that, all right.
Excuse me, the DPW letter does state specifically concrete sidewalks with vertical granite curbing.
On Washington Road, too, well?
For the whole of the frontage, yes.
We can't waive them.
No.
But we can't change that either.
No.
Okay.
And just to go back to your original question, Mr. Chairman, about, I assume waivers and conditions.
Well, just the things that's still just going to bring up, which is.
Oh, oh.
Like at 5, like at 5, 7, 15, and then you list 17 that those can be put in as conditions, right?
Right, so I guess in my count here, just stuff that requires your express approval or vote before we allow them to just move forward with DPW. Notes that I have are for number six, if you want them to have an interim as-built, once they're looking for occupancy. Number seven, we've already discussed that they are asking for the reduction in required parking, and that was discussed at length, so that one seems to be all right. Point eight, they have requested a waiver for continuous curbing within the site that is not with the sidewalk, so that requires an express waiver, so that's 618D. Number 10, there is also, they've requested a waiver to allow more than one driveway within 200 feet of each other, that's 6110A. Then 6110B requires driveways to be located at least 50 feet from intersections or intersections created with other driveways. The loading dock driveway does appear to be about within 50 feet of the driveway to 307 Old Boston, so if that's something that you folks are okay with, that would require an express waiver. 6111C, the applicant has also requested a waiver from locating parking spaces within 20 feet setback of a public way. As I've discussed at length with Mr. Shea and probably with you folks, this lot is subject to two front setbacks, so were they to have 20-foot setbacks for parking spaces, they would have no parking. So I expect that that waiver is probably within line with your approval. And then number 16, 6210H, waiving the provision for a master signage plan. Mr. Shea did provide a concept of what they're thinking the signs are going to look like, but that wasn't a set in stone, no pun intended, final sign plan. It was right there, I had to pick it up.
It's a softball.
So they would either have to come forward with compliant signs when they are ready, so that would be two wall-mounted signs, since they are located on two public ways, and a monument or pylon sign, or else they will have to come back to the board at a later date for a signed special permit package, should what they want to put in not fit the bill.
This thing doesn't have a rim shot on it, right? No, so for the ones I circled, so the dumpster, like, so we need a plan that just says what they're going to do.
With the waste.
In lieu of the dumpsters, you just need to send in however it is you're dealing with the trash, because it can't go out like normal trash.
Yep, we have a dumpster at our other location.
So that's going to be a condition that you send that in.
Okay.
All right, because I don't know what you're doing, but as long as you've got some plan.
Yep.
And it's sent in, and that will comply with what we need, since no dumpster, but you just can't put barrels out, kind of thing.
Yep.
You know what I mean? And then seven, it said, oh, that, you just, you took care of seven just now, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that took care of it. And the other one was 15, was the landscaping, it just said the comment remains, so.
Yeah, so that's not, that one was just not expressly addressed. There are no waivers in this instance, I just noted that there weren't any plantings noted on the plan, and I spoke with Mr. Shea this morning, but I'll allow him to address you guys directly on that.
Pretty much with the size and the shape of the lot and everything, we just want to see what it looks like before we start trying to plan plantings and stuff like that. With the telephone pole being in the very corner there, too, we want to see how that lines up with the shop and just the view. So obviously, we plan on grassing a lot of areas, and we just don't know where we're going to plant anything.
Right, so with that one, what I would suggest that we'll do, which we've done in the past, is one will say that one will be sent to us telling us what you will, what you are doing, or showing us what you will be doing, and that the board retains the right to comment or request changes, something.
Yep.
As we see how it looks, and, you know, if we feel like there's something that's, you know, not being taken care of or whatever like that. you know, not being taken care of or whatever like that. But, whatever it is you are doing, you know, needs to be kept up and, you know, in perpetuity. But, that's, it's just the easiest way for us to deal with it if we're not dealing with it here is to just reserve the, the right to maintain an eye on it.
Absolutely.
All right. Obviously, you know, whoever you talk to about it, keeping in mind you're on the Main Street and two of them kind of, you know.
Yeah.
A lot of stuff's gonna come at that point that you have. So, whatever's gonna go in there, it's gonna have to be durable. Otherwise, you'll be out there fixing it all the time.
Yep.
All right. So, with that, so let me just poll the board then. Is, is, is the majority of the board fine with approving this with, you know, the contingencies and waivers and whatnot that we have and the contingency for them conducting the test pit with DPW?
Yes.
Is that?
Yes.
All right. So, with that, I'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing that there is no one in the audience, I suggest there will not be any. So, with that, I will bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we close the public hearing.
All right.[1557.33]